Good evening, and welcome to the continuation of the December sixth two thousand twenty-three zoning board of appeals meeting. It is January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Rule call Brad Fogg, I'm finally here. Georgia Woodbury?
Here.
Derek Shirley?
Here.
Anthony Grabatz?
Here.
Mark Meany, our council representative, is here. And Ms. Munson, our ZBA, excuse, code enforcement officer, is also present. Is there a motion to take the appeal of Shane Brady off the table?
Georgia Woodbury, I move that we take the appeal of Shane Brady off the table.
There a second? Derek?
Second.
Shirley. All those in favor? It's approved. Okay. This is a request. By SRB property holdings for practical difficulty variance would stand to establish for zoning ordinance to reduce a fifty-foot required setback. Oh, wrong one.
Yeah, that's.
That's it.
Yeah, this.
Got too many things on my table.
This should be, those two are duplicates of each other. Right here.
Yes, I was correct. To reduce a fifty-foot required front setback down to fifteen feet, to reduce a required fifty-foot rear setback down to fifteen feet, to reduce a required twenty-five-foot side setback down to fifteen feet, and to reduce a required ten-foot side setback for a driveway down to five feet located on the property at North Raymond Road, tax map zero-one-three, one-zero-one, zero-zero-seven, zero-zero-zero, in a rural residential and agricultural district. Thank you. We were in, had been in the process of looking at the four required criteria for establishing the practical difficulty. And as I believe we were.
Just for the driveway, I believe.
Let me set that one aside. Not coming here to pack. Folks, give me just a second.
I need a pen.
Convolved here. I thought I had a package in my hand when I came in. And we were in the process of discussing whether, A, the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood. Particularly, we were going to be addressing the driveway appeal first. Shane, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Shane, will you step up to the podium to state your name?
Uh, my name's Shane Brady.
And tell us, um, where we stand, or where you stand on dealing with the neighbors, or working with the town, or somebody to deal with the driveway issue.
Um, I've reached out to the new neighbor, uh, six North Raymond Road, and I guess there's a discrepancy on where the property line was, and now he's not too happy with me. So, moving forward, he doesn't really want to work on an easement to cut across his driveway.
So, does that mean that the property line is not where you thought it was either, or where he thought it was, or is there a survey that shows where the property line is?
We have Wayne Wood going down there to survey it, he just hasn't got there yet. But he was dumping gravel, and there were parking cars well over the property line.
Over his property line or over your property line?
Over mine. And then, since then, they like leveled out the gravel underneath the snow. I didn't really care too much about it, but I guess he thinks that I'm not too happy about it.
I guess that throws another wrench in the works for me, because now we don't know where the property line is.
From my understanding, and just looking at all the diagrams and the deeds, the property line goes right from the edge of the curving, and then there's an old, like, telephone pole or tree. And actually, you can see it. Yeah, if you look in the second picture that, um, Tim sent. This one with the two houses in it. Uh, it's. Yeah.
Yep. We're on the same page?
Yeah. Uh, it's this one.
This one right here.
Okay.
From my understanding, it goes from the
Yeah, that one.
Edge of the curb, diagonally, straight to where that cutoff tree is. And then continues through that to where the fence is, and then goes straight out to twenty-six.
So, that's the property line that's in question, or the one that is parallel to twenty-six?
Uh, it's the one parallel to twenty-six. Because I don't know if you guys went by there before it snowed. Uh, but they dumped, like, a bunch of gravel, and they got a car stuck on the front lawn.
There was a big dumpster there.
Cause he's still working on a curb cut for the water lines?
I didn't even know he was.
Okay.
Cause it doesn't have anything to do with me.
Okay.
It's the, it's the water district.
Right, cause that'd be, he's, wow, not too impressed about that, cause I guess you gotta wait five years before you can have the.
Stickier, just got stickier.
Oh, by yesterday.
If, if, oh, because the state road that was just done.
And who's property?
So, it sounds to me like he thought he owned more land.
Yeah.
Into your lot, and he found out he doesn't, and that's why he's not happy, so you might want to make sure that
Yeah.
You actually found out you own more than what you thought you did.
Right, and then it's also that, um, he's not too happy with, like, the water district or town or something, because there's a five-year moratorium on cutting the pavement or tar, so he can't get water to the house. Which doesn't affect me at all, but it affects the neighbor.
And I think I heard you mention that you're not open to your driveway entrance being on not North Raymond Road, on twenty-six.
I'm okay with it going anywheres, but North Raymond Road, I feel, would be the safest. Even though Route twenty-six, it meets the requirements better, or it's closer to meeting the requirement. Because if you look at the Route twenty-six side, from the tangent point of travel to the property line, it's like fifty-six feet. What I feel, because North Raymond Road's a slower road, it has the stoplight, it's all around a better idea than trying to enter and exit off twenty-six.
Having it on twenty-six, you can pull out of the drive, like, see about twenty-six.
Yeah, there's plenty of site distance either way. It's past the tangent point of travel, it would only be, like, reduce it to probably forty feet. And then there would be no manhole. Uh, not manhole, but storm drain, that drain water into.
And you'd have to put a right turn only.
Yeah, yeah, cause during certain times of day, you couldn't get in or out of there, cause it'd be almost as bad as coming off, um, Wayman Road.
Is there any doubt whatsoever of the property line on Route twenty-six?
No.
That's fixed? Everybody knows it, it's clearly marked by survey pegs or markers or?
Um, if you go to uh, where is it? It doesn't have the survey markers in yet, um, but Wayne's gonna pin them at one point. But you can see that it mentions the maple, and, uh, yeah, that picture. So, it's roughly five feet from where the maple tree is.
What are you, what are you looking at, Shane, so I can look at the same thing here?
Uh, the paper you got in your hand.
This one?
Yeah, um, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, there's a maple tree mark on it.
Okay, I see maple, and there's a.
Forty-foot maple.
Yeah, um.
Does it say forty inches, right?
Yeah, forty-inch maple.
And it's roughly five feet from there.
Cause Tim couldn't read it. Yeah, that's, it shows, it was on our desk.
Yeah, and then there's also a new email from Tim.
How far is your, over your property line to be for that gravel?
Uh, it's probably twenty feet.
Twenty?
And so, um.
Point on this where that pile starts to be.
Uh, so the pile was.
And, oh, alright.
Grab that pen, yeah. Sure.
It was roughly over here where the, middle of the fence is. So, it maybe starts here?
Yeah.
And then it went back towards your side? And here?
Yeah.
I like it working.
Okay.
So, from here, over?
Yeah.
And your property line?
This isn't the property line here.
No, that's, um, it's the setback. That's the right state that I was hoping to have the driveway at. The property line, from my understanding, is to get to the term. Which is, but it goes at a little bit of an angle, so it goes from pretty much right here that corner of this driveway to that, um, tree in the middle.
Okay, Anthony, which picture are you looking at?
The last picture of the.
This one?
Yes.
This one?
Nope, the very last one.
This one?
Yep.
Okay, what's he, what's on floor?
So, his property line's over here, at the beginning.
He thinks.
That's what I think, and Wayne's, um, gonna double-check that.
So, if his property line's over here, he's dropping. He dropped a gravel around this area.
And.
So, if he thinks that's on his property.
And a couple.
If his neighbor thinks that his gr- that gravel is on his property, then his driveway.
That's a lot of property.
Shane, I would say right up front.
Yeah.
That without knowing where the property line is on that side.
Right.
There, there's no way that I would approve any type of variance
Right.
on that side of the lot.
Yep.
And that has, if, if the property line is where your neighbor thinks the property line
Right.
is, that certainly impacts any potential for any side setback or back setback that you're looking for for a house.
Right, yeah, cause the building envelope's pretty small.
It's smaller and smaller.
Yeah.
And.
When is he expecting to have that survey done?
I talked to Wayne probably three weeks ago. But he's done a lot of work for our family, so it kind of gets, when he has free time, he goes over there and does it. We've used him for probably the last twenty-five years, and it's kind of, when he gets to it, he gets to it. I didn't really think there was too much of a rush, because nothing's gonna get done till springtime anyways.
Can you ask if he could have it done by the next meeting? If they were to table this?
Well, that's only, that's only three weeks away.
Yeah, but could you ask him if he?
Yeah, I could at least have, um, not do the whole survey, but pin the cor- or.
Very honestly, I want to see a whole survey.
Okay.
I want to see how far it is from here, I want, I'd like to see a, a survey done that shows
Right.
the distance from the, uh, identified Department of Transportation radius point
Yeah.
on Route twenty-six.
Okay.
How far it's gonna be, I want to know, cause if you look at the information, if you look at the information that the Public Works Director's, uh, sent, the speed limit's thirty miles an hour on the North Raymond Road, so the site distance has to be a minimum of two-hundred-and-fifty feet.
Right, which would have it.
And I'd want to know that there's at least two-hundred-and-fifty feet site distance between where you plan to put the driveway, cause I'm not sure that I want to set a precedent, that, this is me personally speaking
Right.
as a member, not, I'm not proofing down boards.
Yeah.
To knowingly and willingly, uh, say that we're going to, or that I would be in favor of throwing out the main Department of Transportation safety regulations
Right.
so that you can have a driveway. And if we were to do that, we would be basically setting a precedent. And I'm not really in favor of setting the precedent on a high-traffic road.
Right.
Well, I know. And if the driveway is certainly closer to twenty-six than, than you think it is, or the property line is, that brings into another whole concern for me, is right-turning traffic, or left-turning traffic into the, uh, store that close to your potential driveway, and the reduced distance of cars being able to stop if they come around the corner
Right.
from shake road either way, to suddenly find a car in the middle of the road trying to get across that road to, uh, turn left coming on North Raymond Road.
Right.
There's just so much there that bothers me.
Right, and I know that, um, North Raymond Road doesn't meet the requirements as well. Uh, like, if you move the driveway entrance over to twenty-six, it meets all the site distances, and it almost meets the tangent point of travel. It's just personally, I wouldn't want to enter and exit off twenty-six, just because the added risk because of speed limits.
There's a, there's a huge amount of traffic here.
Right.
I, I, I have a, uh, just a thought, um, is it, and it might be way extra work, um, could there be? I almost want to go on-site myself a little bit.
We can do that.
Because, because I, I, I see, I see, I, I, actually, my friend lives in Casco, so I go by it all the time.
Right.
Uh, but I, I, I kind of want to stand there personally a little bit, and I think, what if, is it possible that one driveway could be one-way?
Oh, so you'd pull.
How, how's it gonna get out?
But you'd have two driveways.
Yeah, but then it's.
Two appeal, two, uh.
And then it's double the risk.
Yeah, double the risk.
You make the lot even smaller.
Yeah, the lot, it's so small then.
Yeah, I have to save this.
But we, we could.
You'd have to have a time house.
Schedule a site walk?
Because, like, I, I, I'm, I'm, cause I, I agree with Brad, because in the sense of, like, yeah, I can't, um, consciously go over safety regulations like that, especially at that corner, um. But I also understand the town of Bray wants people to move here.
Right.
So, so, so I think there has to, I mean, again, I'm not saying this, um, I, 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 I'm, I know the town's probably willing to work, but I think there has to be some ground somewhere, and I think maybe an onsite will maybe give us a fresh look at that, and hopefully, we can maybe see something that we're not really seeing here. Um, but I, I agree with Brad on that sense of, you know, I'm all about, you know, making presidents. I'm, I'm all about breaking glass ceilings, um, but when it comes to something like that, it, it is something that, um, I personally don't feel comfortable putting my neck on the line, um, but I, I, I'm not done, you know what I mean? I want to see, like, I will flip every, want to flip every, like, rock to see
Right.
what we can make work, because I personally want more people to move to Bray. So, that's kind of my two cents.
And I think once we have survey markers.
Yes.
Right.
Then we can go and stand there and say, okay, if the driveway's here, this is how much viewing we have. And, uh, so, we're not saying no, it's just a matter of, we need to see a little bit more information.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like, I would like to do a site walk. I don't again, only me speaking, I don't want to do the site walk until the survey marks are up, or a little flag showing the property lines.
Yes.
And I would also like whoever does your work for you to mark out the setbacks that you're looking for.
Okay.
So, you need survey markers
Yeah.
for, to show the lot line.
And then, uh.
You need, you need markers to show me where you want
The building.
the, so, the, uh, building lot to be.
Okay.
And I'm gonna add a little burden, I also want to see the markers where the current requirements are, not where you want them to be, but where the current requirements are.
Yeah.
So, I can get a visual of, this is what the town requires, and this is what you're looking for.
Okay, that'll.
And we'll try to bring this thing to closure, one way or the other.
Right.
I know that adds a little extra burden to you, but.
We're trying to make it work.
Okay, um, would it be all right if we table this two meetings? And then?
We will table this to a point certain, and that point certain would be, uh, when you notify the code enforcement officer
Okay.
that you're ready.
All right.
And then, uh, I will get together with the board members to see what will work. It might be a, a daytime.
Yeah.
Probably better in the daytime, very honestly, cause I don't know that I want to look at it at night.
Right.
Yeah.
And maybe, you know, what's ever convenient to these other three people. I'm retired, so it doesn't really matter, maybe what.
I don't think, he's not gonna make the, the, at the end of February meeting at this point.
Well, no, when, when he notifies you.
So, he, he, it wouldn't be until the end of March, and so ideally, the site walk, what I've seen other boards do is the site walk is like, if you have a meeting, it's scheduled, it's that night, you do the site walk at, say, six-fifteen. So, you go and you look at the site and everything, and so I would say by the end of March, there'll probably still be enough daylight, hopefully, at that time.
Well, daylight savings time will have started by then.
Yeah, when you do it then, and that's what I would suggest doing. I can work with Shane as far as.
Can I, um, could we do it possibly earlier in the day, cause five o'clock traffic is probably not the best to be parking on the side of the road.
It's always.
During hours, I want to see in a, in a high-traffic time.
Okay.
I mean, they're gonna see worst-case scenario.
Highway during a high-traffic time.
Okay.
And that's our biggest concern, right, is, yeah.
I mean, normally, normally, boards would do a site walk. They would normally do it, like, a half hour, an hour before their night meeting, so that it's not, you know, you got, guys go out there and look at this thing tomorrow, and you site walk, and then there's a meeting two months from now.
Right.
Usually, while you're right there.
Right.
Um, and I don't think that.
We, I hear you, but Shane's gonna let you know when, when Mr. Wood has the survey done.
Yeah, sure.
And at that point, if it's prior to the March meeting, then we'll do it in March. If it's after the March meeting, we'll have to wait till April.
Right. Now, um, would you like me to put the stakes in on the Route twenty-six side where the tangent circle is, and?
I want the stakes everywhere that you're seeking a, a, a variance for.
Okay.
All, the, the current requirements, setback requirements are listed in the, uh, uh, zoning.
Right.
Or the planning manual, whatever, manual it is. And then stakes where you're looking to seek the appeal, like fifteen-feet setback from the property line, I want to see those stakes.
Okay.
And I want to see the fifty-foot stakes
Yeah.
for the current requirement.
Okay.
I mean, thirty-five feet is a lot of space that you're asking
Right.
the board to, uh, grant an appeal on.
Right, yeah, cause, um.
And I think the neighbors have to be re-noticed, Tammy.
Is that what?
I think the, the neighbors need to be re-noticed.
Yeah, we could do that when it's.
Yeah, if there's any, if, if, cause if he's looking to move the driveway from here to here, possibly, that's a.
Yeah, it changes it completely.
That's a change, and.
Yeah, we could do that, and notify them in the site walk.
Yeah, well, we have to do that anyway for the public.
Yep.
In case the public wants to be there, and I'm sure there might be at least one person that wants to be there.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, I don't want to drive this up, but it seems like everything is changing a little bit each time.
Right.
And once the survey's done, it would be a lot easier to try to figure things out.
Yeah, cause then there's definite lines everywhere.
Right.
So. And then, uh, building envelope, I might not need that much of a setback. So, I'm hoping to just have like a twenty-by-thirty-five or thirty-six-foot building. I just.
So, thirty-five feet is the most you'd be asking for?
Yeah, it all depends on, like, where the septic can fit.
And you were gonna be one of those concrete basin, whatever they call it, type?
Yeah, about that.
Yeah, the Algen beds, I think. Because it decreases the footprint, so it doesn't have to be as big.
Okay, that's something that, 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 your septic plan would have to be approved by the code enforcement office anyway.
Yeah. Right, and then, um, a third party goes out and does, does septic design.
Right.
Yeah, the other, a lot of times, they can also do, on these small lots out on the lake, they could, the other option is doing concrete chambers that you can park on.
Oh, really?
So, yeah, so a lot of people, a lot of times, on these really postage-stamped lots on the lake, a lot of times, their septic field is actually underneath where they're parking.
Well, that's what Stimson Hall is.
Wow. Really?
Yeah, between the post, the old post, or the old town office and Stimson Office, that's the back quarter of that, the back half of that's.
The septic system?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, yeah, cause, um, Andy Ash put one in for the trailer park down on twenty-six. But he didn't do the concrete barriers at the beginning, and everybody drove over and broke it. So, then he had to replace it.
So, if, if, if you can't fit a traditional you know, like an Algen system type
Right.
then there are other options that it could go with a setback, a variance that I do on my level. His, his septic system that could actually be incorporated as the driveway. It's just the chambers are rated to hold cars.
Right.
Drive all over them.
My goodness, that's neat.
Okay, we, we all set, Shane?
Yeah.
Okay, so you understand what we're looking for?
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything they want to ask Shane, or make sure he's prepared for?
No, I'm fine.
A lot of sticks and flags, bub.
Little colored flags.
I'll mark them in different colors, so it's easy to.
No, that's, that's pretty important.
Right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to, uh, table?
A second.
Okay, all those, all those in favor, the motion to table? Fogg, motions to table?
Derek seconded it.
Derek seconds? All those in favor, table it. All set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other new business before the, uh, board tonight?
You need to approve your minutes?
Yeah, we didn't.
Our meeting's not over yet.
No, but the last one.
Oh, hey, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't.
I don't, I don't want to do like a half-and-half approval, we'll wait until the whole meeting is over, and.
Oh, for this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it's, it's still part of the meeting, and.
Oh, okay, cause I had to give a. Oh, okay, cause I had to give us meetings minutes.
We'll let those minutes.
No, the minutes approved, but, but there are other stuff on those minutes, so you wanna just wait on this entire thing and then we'll do.
We'll, we'll wait on the entire package.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
I don't think anything's gonna change, I've already signed the paperwork and the other stuff, so. All is good in that sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
None that I'm aware of.
I just want the table.
Is there a?
Yeah. Do you want this?
Did everybody get their little code thing?
Yes.
I guess it was discussed after we took ZBA class. That was done after we adjourned last time. I think it was after we adjourned.
There's been uh, some previous discussion on the zoning board members taking a class.
We got a look email.
An online uh, class.
Yeah, just get in touch with me, I gotta pay attention.
The code enforcement clerical assistant, Inger, was going to be coordinating um, with us to sign up for that class, so that we can get the discount on that. I can't remember getting an email from Inger to do that yet. But I know that we do have money in the budget and Tammy has uh, confirmed the money in the budget.
We, we do, we, yeah, we do have money in, there's training money in the ZBA budget. Um, as well as training money that I could use as well. We, I, I looked at some of the, the agendas of even the class that you wanted to do online. What we would, what I would prefer to see happen would be to either have, um, and I probably would lean towards it being a third party, but the attorney that has represented the board, um, on the last two appeals where you've had legal representation, Jim Casteficus, I would lean towards having him come in and do a training specifically for this board and town of Gray stuff. And pay him to do it, rather than an outside generic, you know, these scenarios and everything else that isn't really applicable to Gray.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, or the other person, it could be, it could be our attorney.
I would rather have that, you know.
Yeah, it could be, it could be, we could have Ben McCall do it as well, but he's usually the attorney that represents me. I think it would be fine to do it, cause he's the town's attorney, but I would prefer to have Jim do it, because he is the third party. And I've, and I've been leaning towards him representing you, all of you with every time I've needed to rely on somebody.
Well, let, let's get something set up.
Yes.
And let's make sure that we try and invite our immediate neighbors, so maybe we can split the cost between Gray and New Gloss or Gray and Raymond or Gray and New Gloss, because we all have similar issues. We all, we all have shoreline zoning, we all have rural residential, we all have these things and and I'm sure that would be as beneficial to them, and Raymond has had precedent setting Supreme Court, made judicial Supreme Court precedent setting cases there, uh, that have been typically part of the Maine Municipal Association class, but they blow over them so quickly.
Hmm.
That.
Right.
We don't get a good understanding of anything uh, from Maine Municipal Association. So let's get that set up and let's try to get that done, you know, like before May.
Okay.
Cause I don't think that we should be, keep putting this off and putting it off.
No, would you wanna do it, um, say if I could get it set up, um, if we don't have an application come in within the next like day or so, I don't think you're gonna have anything in February. Would you wanna do it that night of the meeting? If we could get it set up for that?
I would not.
Do it the same night as the February meeting?
Yeah, because if you don't have anything on your agenda for February, they wouldn't, there normally would not be a meeting. So if I could get.
We would call it a workshop.
Yeah, it would be a workshop instead.
Yep.
Works for me.
It's fine, let's, let's schedule a work, without, minus any applications, let's schedule a workshop for the third Wednesday in February. For training, ZBA targeted training.
That's great.
And I'll see if Jim's available.
Works for me.
Could any of you, could any of you be here, could you be here earlier than seven? If you wanted to start it at six, I don't, I know sometimes.
I can make six. Yep, I can make six.
Okay, let's, make sure, make sure we post that for six o'clock then.
Yeah, I just see this being, I, I just, I see it being probably a, a, a two to three hour. Type of training.
It's two and a half good hours if we get more than.
Exactly.
I mean, we've all experienced that.
Yeah.
They, I mean, oh.
Hey, they're, they're ju- they're just.
They just skim where the lights.
I will say though, that one thing we want, you.
You and I went, yeah.
I forget what, Johnson and Bar.
Right, yeah, Jensen.
That was a great presentation, like.
That was good that night.
It was a great overview, even with a huge audience.
Yep.
It was still very.
Yeah, that's our, that's our law firm.
Yeah, it was a very good presentation and a great.
Yes, it was.
I'll try and get it set up for uh, February, because I, I don't anticipate.
If we go at six o'clock, maybe we.
Oh, actually, no, you know what, we do have a, we have an application.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, I forgot.
Scratch everything.
Yeah.
Would you wanna do it a week after that, a workshop? Let me check and see what dates would be available and I'll email all of you.
That sounds great.
Okay?
That would be better.
Yep.
Let me see what I can come up with and get in touch with you guys.
The next meeting's the twenty eighth?
The fourth Wednesday is of the month.
The third, the third Wednesday in February.
Third Wednesday, okay.
One, two, the twenty first.
Right, okay.
Oh, it's a leap year this year.
Is it really?
So, yeah, and I, so I think just in case any of you, we'll be sending out the packets and everything, but just in case that any of you are interested in getting a jumpstart, I know it's a shoreline type of variance, other than that, I can't say anything else about the specifics, but.
Is the application complete?
We'll make sure it is.
The front page is all filled out and the numbers are all.
He's meeting with me on Friday.
Okay.
His application's been submitted, it's been paid for, so he's made the date. He's meeting with me on Friday to go over what he should give and do and to prepare for materials.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Georgia Woodbury, I motion readjourn.
Second by.
I second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, we are adjourned until the February meeting.
Still.